A pledge called Order of Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education Regular Meeting, taking place on May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at six thirty P M. in the Mount Pleasant High School cafeteria. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in the public but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time of public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at previous meetings or presented to the board for discussion this evening. As a courtesy, please turn off and silence your cell phones and stand for the pledge.
For the agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Indigenous Land Analysis Statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Anishinaabe people whose traditional land we have gathered on today. To recognize the Anishinaabe people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation in a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial and whose land on which the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian tribe have resided and who have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the long standing history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Local call?
Courtney Steigman here, Sheila Murphy here, Dana Kaufman's here, Lillian Kendall, Jessica Jerrigan, Tim Worringer here, Amy Vought here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything they would like to change? Okay, next comes the superintendent report. Good evening, everyone. The first couple of items on our report this evening will be presented to us during the report and then we'll revisit them again for potential approvals during new business. So the first of which is about project recommendations. So first I'll introduce to you Ben Jeff Bates from Locust Corporation to highlight our latest project. So Jeff, thank you for being here this evening.
You're welcome, Jennifer. I'm very glad to be here. It's starting to be kind of a monthly thing, I think, so I had our third bid package. Things turned out pretty well. Again, this was for the site improvements at the high schools. So a little mission on to the athletic storage building, new parking lot sidewalks associated with the ball fields, and then track surface in place. And seeing your bid information, that we put together a board recommendation, we left off the track. That was the one number that seemed to come in pretty high. We did have two bidders, but it was both, both of them were above forty thousand. We thought it was more like a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. So we talked with the district, we decided to pull off on doing that work until next year. We did it in the fall, and maybe we'll hit more bids, and hopefully material pricing later we go down a little bit, let's see. We talked with the contractors, we spoke with both of them, kind of get an idea of where they were at, the buyer or size they were. They said they had two material increases in the last, since the game here. They've got another schedule for June, so they're already planning on that. Their schedules were already fairly full, so there we put a ton of overtime on in order to be able to work on it. So we were a little afraid that might happen, a bidding as late as we did, but we wanted to give it a shot, see if we could get done this summer. But I think we'll work out a lot better for you for next, next year. The rest of the work seemed to be pretty much in line. We're dealing with all, for both, for all local contractors for the flat in Mount Pleasant, and a fit would need to treat that. So they're all fairly close, and we worked with all eight of them, and we're pretty comfortable with the outcome here. Any questions, any concerns?
So like I said earlier, we will approve this bid recommendation on new business if that's pretty favorable for them.
And I did talk to the local track leader today and informed him of the school's decision, so he is not upset with that. He's got plenty of order for this summer, and he'd be more happy to do this fall.
Thank you, Jeff. Next, under my report, we have the annual budget presentation from Gresham Isabella R A S D. And once again, Kevin Cole here from the R A S D. Kevin, thank you for being here with us.
You're welcome. Everybody should have a copy of the budget in the board packet. I'm gonna go over the millages on the front page. That's, they're the same as last year, the trees. We didn't ask the local village recently that that was going to expire after the twenty-two levy, so actually we passed it before it expires. So we can say it was a renewed one. Anyways, the general front budget. I'm gonna go through this. There's three counts on this budget. There's actual count for two thousand and twenty-one. Those are audited counts. There's the final letter budget for two thousand and twenty-two this year. And then there's proposed budget for two thousand and twenty-three. And I gotta kind of jump between these three counts a little bit because there's different things I wanted to point out. Local sources is mostly property tax, and those revenues have gone up quite a bit over the last couple of years with a lot of new permits going online. But also, in two thousand and twenty-one, we didn't have any catering or room rent because our cafeces were closed down. So the revenues were really down that year. And we started getting Medicaid revenues, our general fund, in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, and two thousand and twenty-three because we built Medicaid for our mental health services that we don't provide for our local districts. So that's something we need to address. Our state revenues have increased quite a bit over these three years. Both, that's kind of a mixture of a couple of different things. Part of this because our retirement funding all comes into our general fund, and then we transfer a lot of that out to other funds where the payroll has incurred. But the retirement funding has gone up tremendously over the last three years, like as for all districts because the retirement rate goes up and the state funds they increase cost. So also, in state revenues, we can find an increase in mental health funding, we call it Section thirty-one. And we provide these mental health services, social works, support office in multiple districts, and we're able to pay for that with this grant. That grant we didn't get a couple of years ago now. It's almost seven hundred thousand dollars for the two thousand and twenty-three school year. So it's a, that's a huge increase towards over the last few years. And then the final, other sources you'll see is, those are all payments from our local districts for services that they buy for us. That includes technology services, business services, and pupil accounting services. And now other support services here. Pupil services is only two services. Truancy services that we provide to our districts, the health cost. That cost is very steady from year to year. And then mental health services, and this is where we spend that grant that's state funding what we got for mental health services. And you can see that's increased for months over the last few years. So that's the reason for making some of that function. The structural staff, this is all of our curriculum work and professional development stuff that we provide to our local districts and also our pupil counting services, our, our, our instructional staff. And there's, you'll see that middle number, never been a grant, one ten grant of almost hundred thousand dollars that was basically widely received and would have been paid out to another organization that was money in development. It makes that middle number for two thousand and twenty-two look a little higher than it should otherwise. General administration is our superintendent and the board boss. You'll see that this looks kind of goofy because it goes from five hundred and twenty-five thousand up to six hundred and forty-two thousand because we have election costs of seventy-five thousand dollars in there. And then it goes down to five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, and that's even more than the decrease in two thousand and twenty-one because our new superintendent secretary is already in camp time. Whereas at our camp time, this human resources system, that's actually going to save some money under general administration. Business services, we, during COVID, we actually laid a person off here, so those costs are kind of low in two thousand and twenty-one. In two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, we hired some cool Austin's back there to replace that person. And then also, and then in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, we have superintendent secretaries that kind of retires in there plus we're hiring one more business staff. And operations and maintenance, two thousand and twenty-one was kind of low because we laid off a custodian, anti-custodian during COVID, and we hired them back in two thousand and twenty-two. Central services is our technology and pupil audit services. Not people take the audit. We contract service with their landlord, ISB, and they provide that to all of our local districts. They can do it cheaper than we can pay or do that. So our technology services, we actually were down one person in two thousand and twenty-one with personal leave during COVID. We hired somebody mid-year coming to twenty-one, twenty-two. And then in late twenty-one, twenty-two, we had one person leave or were not replacing. And then, come out, operating transfers in, these are the most that, all the different funds that I've actually purchased business services, technology services, and other services from our general fund that provides all the services. And then operating transfers out, this is mostly social security and retirement cost, transfer, transfer another funds, special, special ed fund. Also, there's some funds that have projects that run at a loss and we, we subslice and we're graced with general fund monies like our finance software implementation is one of the bigger things. And if you look down in, in two thousand and twenty-one, we lost a lot of thousand dollars and much of, we're supposed to come to break even for the general fund. This year, we're projecting an increase in fund equity of hundred sixty-eight thousand because we have some people we were off part in the year. We've been hired until later in the year. And then in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, there's shows like Lawson, general fund. In reality, we think it involves that our whole budget because we always, we try to kind of suppose it's possible, but usually it involves a thousand, zero. So I think in reality for two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, we'll probably get around fifty thousand, forty, fifty thousand fund equity. Can I just, if you have any same questions or guys usually give me all sorts of questions?
All right. I appreciate you explaining a lot of the questions I had to clarify the swings, right? And so we know during COVID period, seeing in terms of seeing through swings because of all the different things that were going on. So sometimes it takes it out of the normal rhythm of everything.
I tried to explain each slide a little bit more like you can, so yeah.
And also, you know, we always talk about the fun balance. So we're noticing that even though it's going up, we're trying to keep it down and keeping it aligned. We get that and how that works. So I appreciate you giving all that work that we got aligned.
We do have a big fund that can be our general fund, I guess, but we rely on our cash flow for some of our other funds. One in particular is all federal funds with the kind of money before we do request money. There's often a little too much laid there. So we rely on our general funds of cash flow that fund.
Which makes a lot of sense. We have to do the same thing. But thank you for explaining why I had any questions.
You're welcome.
Any other members have questions, Kevin? I'm noticing your work packet separate from the budget. There is a resolution. It's listed as number twelve point two. And that will be what we'll ask you to approve during new business. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next, under my report is the custodial bid recommendation. Josh Romans is here to walk through that information. So thanks for reading it, Josh.
Yeah, good evening. Nice to see you guys again. So we took our custodial contract on to bid this year, first time since two thousand and ten. We have been with Grand Rapids buildings since we privatized back in two thousand and ten. To solicit a bid, we, our business office posted our R F B on the state issue website Sigma. That's the website to contract, which kind of keep an eye on and see what's at school type, you know, that bid on accordingly. In response to our R F B, we had six contractors attended mandatory free bid meeting. Of those six that attended, five submitted proposals for, for contracts. Bids were received till two P M. on April twenty-fifth, and you open them and read them aloud publicly. If you can, you have a theory around two oh five on that same day. Kind of the analysis of all the bids that we took, here we see, I will break down the numbers right now. So D M R Group proposed for a three-year contract, a total of four million nine hundred eighty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars. L G C Global proposed a total contract cost of four million six hundred seventy-one thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-one cents. And Byro Queen proposed a total contract cost of four million six hundred twelve thousand six hundred and three and eighty-five cents. Romano Building Services proposed a total contract cost of four million four hundred thirty-four thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and thirty-one cents. And our current contractor, Grand Rapids Building Services, posed a total contract cost of three million five hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. All bidders, all bidders were found to be qualified to bid on these services. They attended and made it to a free bid meeting. They acknowledged up a dentum, they had a paperwork, so they were all legitimate bids. Of all of those bids, we interviewed the three global bidders. Grand Rapids Building Services and Byro Queen and Romano. I will now get into why, get into why we are recommending what we are recommending. So wages will increase across the board. All, every contractor that bid, bid to pay a couple of dollars an hour more than we are currently paying. So that's a good thing. I know all you guys know that one of the huge fights with custodial is permanent. There is just kind of seems like it's a revolving door for a lot of them. Granted, we have some great people that have been with us a long time, well, and, but that's just one of the huge fights. The second you get someone in and start to be afraid, you know, they'll leave, you know, for somewhere else with better money. So wages will increase across the board with all their proposals. Why we are recommending Romano, and I'll start to give you why, is they allotted for pay increases for the next few years. Fifty cents an hour for every employee next year and then fifty cents the following year. Not all contractors allot them that. I think that would make a big difference with retention and on top of, you know, just morale. It would be awesome. Another huge difference is that some contractors, staff, and those who are familiar with their current setup, they staff, they staff are full-time staff, year-round full-time staff. A lot of the afternoon, a lot of the positions are all part-time. I think that contributes a lot to why we have a lot of turnover. Romano is proposing that we do almost entirely full-time staff, year-round staff. I think that's going to be huge. That also will lots of the big increase in summers because in the summer workdays, we're going to have a lot more people on in the summer than we currently have, which I think will be better cleaning. It'll help, you know, employee retention because they're not going to be leaving, they don't want to go for other places. So that's, that's a huge difference and we'd like to see that. So Great References Romano added is they're currently working with C N U. They've been with them eighteen years and they clean one point seven million square feet, which is double the size of us. So that tells me that with the wages they're proposing, and they've been with them that long, that they're able to staff over there at that wage. And I think, I mean, this, this is our account. I think they'll be able to staff here as well, and they're confident they can do that with these wages. Of all the contractors that did propose, Romano is starting out at the lowest here it takes, depending on which position. But, so that can go both ways. We could like say higher or lower, but if they're able to start out there, say the central staff will go there. You know, I think they're comfortable we can do it, and with the built-in raises, I think we can keep them. Other examples we took into consideration, similar to our COVID situation, we had to add a lot of staff for disinfectant touch points, all of that good stuff. C N U did that, or Romano did that with C N U. They just worked on becoming more efficient and actually absorbed that cost with no extra charge to C N U. Where, you know, we could be paid in our kind of leg for all that extra staff that we have in the last couple of years. So I thought that was pretty impressive that they're willing to work that type with them and make their processes more, more efficient to keep costs down. They have, they asked up broke down to as simple as battery, you know, battery powered backpacks. They're like, if you don't have to drag the order around, then you can, you can go between this many square feet in the afternoon to this many square feet. They got it, they can dial into a science, and we like to see that. Of all the companies that listed their profit margins, which a few did, Romano did have the lowest profit margin out of all the companies. So that tells me that they're putting their money into their staff, into their business, and not necessarily into their pockets. So. That being said, that's kind of a rundown of everything that, you know, in our custodial R F B. And that is why we're recommending we, that we go with Romano Building Services.
Good work, Josh.
Any questions?
I would just add to the, to the information that Josh shared. If this is approved, this would be a July one transition. One of the really important things to note is that the bids all included purchasing new equipment because the equipment that our custodians use now is actually owned by G R B S. So even like this normal new equipment and that sort of thing. Romano seem to have a very healthy budget to equip our district very well.
So they will start out with everything ready, which would be good, just, you know, just to clean slate, yeah?
I don't know. It's just eight hundred thousand dollars norm.
It's.
For, you know, I mean, because you don't know if, maybe they have the lowest, you know, I'm sorry, my brain is not working today.
Profit margin.
Profit margin. But maybe the other ones have a higher profit margin because they're going to have to pay higher wages. I mean, it's going to be, and then you have employees that are employed right now that are probably going to leave one and go to the other. So, you know, if we're having a problem with what we have now, then is that going to solve the problem? I, I just think if, if eight hundred thousand dollars that we can spend on kids rather than cleaning, is it really worth it?
Yeah, so the hourly wage with Romano would be more than what our employees are currently making or what the G R B S.
But they're not our employees. They're their employees.
Right, right. What G R B S employees are not making. So those employees that currently work for G R B S would have the opportunity to move to Romano. I mean, that, that's what typically happens when you change a private service provider. I mean, you're right, it is a significant amount of money to spend. I think that we've been dissatisfied with the service that we've gotten.
Okay, I guess then why haven't we heard about the dissatisfaction over the last, you know, I haven't heard that it's been terrible. So, you know, I guess that's why I have the next question is if it's been bad, then why haven't we heard about that? And, you know, that would make a more reasonable. Because I don't think, we're here to look out for the kids, right? So the money should be spent on them any chance we get as opposed to this. Now, if we're not getting the services that we're, we should be getting, then that's a whole nother.
Jump into a pinch of that. So if you look at the consistency of all the proposals we got, they were not our current contractor. They are all within, you know, very close to each other. I issued a, you know, a spec sheet on how I would prefer everything to be cleaned. How often I want stuff cleaned, how often I want it done, what I want done and stuff for days. It's almost identical to the one that we have in place. All of those guys, the other, you know, four bidders are all very close and, you know, get that eight hundred thousand dollar job. The reason I just, my reasoning is G R B S isn't following and didn't bid to that spec sheet because it's been the same spec sheet since two thousand and ten, and I've never been able to get them to do a lot of the projects that they get to do. For example, cleaning out the exterior windows of the building. It's supposed to be clean every summer, even the second story exterior windows. I've never been able to get them to do these things. So all these other guys bid on, hey, if you want this done, I'll put a dollar amount in there to get all these summer projects done, which I think would increase, you know, I think our staff can come back to clean the buildings, which would be, would be great. I fight it daily, day in and day out, all the cleaning issues. I don't, I don't bring them to, to you guys like, you know, but if you, if you wanted to ask some staff, I'm sure.
You, you understand it. That makes more of an impact on me that you're saying our previous one hasn't been doing the job that we needed to do. All right. In order to get what we need done, done, it's going to be this much money.
Yeah. So that's why I think all of that is so.
That's a reasonable argument, but to just argue that, you know, they're paying their people better and, and they're making less money. You know, those aren't our concerns. Our concerns are, are they doing the job that we asked them to do? And is that money going to be worthwhile taking away from the students and putting to clean?
So if you, and I'm not saying I, you know, I give a couple of off surveying, they could call our staff to get theirs, you know, survey together to like, you know, what our staff thinks about our current services. But I just, of all your minds, since I know you're in here, that the general, this is the hopes that are happening and that everyone just settles for it like it is what it is. So that being said, I think the retention is a lot of their issue because they staff with, you know, eight, ten, twelve full-time staff with a couple supervisors, and everyone else is part-time. Well, that part, all those part-time staff, and they're just constantly, and now I can't even learn their names anymore because by the time I learn their names, they're gone. You know, they go to dump. So it just.
You know, I just find that, you know, it's funny because everybody, nobody can find good help. Nobody can find help, period. So I, I, I don't know how they can come in and hire full-time staff.
Because their dollar is keeping those people on year-round. It's the same thing with me, with me and bus drivers at this point. A lot of my drivers are jumping ship because they're going to be year-round replacement because, you know, I can't keep them visiting the summer.
Also, G R B S wasn't keeping them year-round.
Most of them were laid off. They only keep on their day staff.
Okay.
So business does have to be full staff year-round, which I think both Philly and LA are cleaning.
Okay, that explains that.
And that's why the number is so significantly higher than we, that all these other people bid tagging all these summer projects and cleaning entrances and doing the outside windows and stuff, that G R B S is supposed to be having done the whole time.
Okay. Well, that gives me a good explanation as to why it's so much higher and, you know, why it would be a better choice.
It is, yeah. It is a couple hundred thousand dollars each year, you know, more than we are currently paying. But I'll be honest, if we factored in the extra money we're paying for like disinfectant touch points and stuff, they would probably be right at what we would be with Romano. And if you go back to the staffing, everyone's fighting staffing, but Romano is at central, as C N U can fully staff with the same dollar they're proposing us. And their employee retention is way better even, you know, their representative at C N U, Jen contact. It's like, yeah, like they keep their staff, it's, you know, they're doing well. So that is the polar opposite to how I feel like we're doing. So, and I think it takes money to keep.
Well, those are good explanations that I can justify.
Yeah, that's why I'm here.
The other question I have is just to clarify a couple of bits. So these dollar amounts are for three years.
Correct. Three year. So it is, you know, from the first to the second bidder, it is eight hundred thousand dollars or so, would be a couple hundred thousand each year.
And so you still feel that the eight hundred thousand dollars in the next couple of years, higher cost, is probably worth it in the services that we're already beginning? Stability and arrangement of the district?
I do. On top of the safety concern where we aren't just a revolving door of people that we don't know, that we don't get help around our students. Because currently, like I said, we have so much turnover that they're in the building, you know, there's, it's honestly, it becomes a little bit of a safety concern with that. So I'm confident that the cleaning will be allocated, the staff retention will be allocated, just morale in general, you know. A lot of our day staff that currently have our points, you walk in the building, students love them, staff love them. I would like to be at our afternoon and our night staff as well, and I think this is probably the only way to do it.
Usually with bidding, since we do a lot of bidding, usually they aren't pumped together, and when there's an out hiring, there's usually a reason.
There's a reason.
Whether it's super high or super low, right? There's reasons that they're all like.
Yeah, I think, like I said, I didn't, you know, I don't want to bash anybody, but I think our current contractor knows what they can get away with not doing out of that spec sheet when the other, everyone else bid to do it.
What, what happens if they can't find staff full-time? I mean, is there a?
So I can tell you, the past four years, we've been missing staff the entire time ever since. So our current contractor covers it with all of our overtime pay for the good employees that do show up and want work, and they're just hustling non-stop all day.
There's no discount to the district if they're short of staff?
No, they, they typically just cover it with other people who do want work.
But the thing I want to make sure too, that, so they do all of the snow removal? That to me is one of the biggest tasks as well, and they have turnover and we need all of our sidewalks cleared to be ready to go and save for our students. And they have turnover and we need all of our sidewalks cleared to be ready to go and save for our students. We need them here and reliable, and that's been the mission the last couple of years, so.
Alright, thank you.
Next one, I'm going to post a rundown report is a presentation from Mount Pleasant Middle School. So I'll introduce Darby Leber and Courtney Russell and Annalee Spox and my good friend, Holly's here too. Thank you guys for being here tonight.
It's covered.
I'm a lovely presentation.
Yeah, I'm just going to introduce these guys and they will, um, do their presentation tonight for the social emotional piece of our multi-tiered system of support. We're continuing to still talk about that MTSS and continue to think back after that. So we have Annalee Spox, our project leader counselor, and Courtney Russell, our ed research counselor, and then Ally, our therapy doc, so they will be presenting. Alright, well, thank you for having us. Um, I believe in front of you is our parking lot document that Annalita Rie has brought from her the last couple of visits. Uh, you might just wander around a little bit, she said, hands a long day. Um, so just please feel free to use that for any questions that you might have for us that we can take back to school or we can later answer for you. Um, and then just, um, to refer to both of you, we are gonna go over our MTSS and the relates to our social emotional supports at the middle school. Um, we're gonna talk to you about our tiered interventions in terms of outreach that we have for our students. A little bit of data for you, um, and then we'll just wrap it up with a little bit of, um, overall adolescent development. Um, so just as a reminder, um, the multi-tiered systems of support, you've also seen this each time and are being presented, this is sort of how we look at, um, the way that we provide services, whether it's academic, social, emotional, behavioral, um, where we have that pyramid or pie, um, where we have things that hit all of our students, some of our students, and then a smaller percentage of our students. And so we're just gonna chat about what that looks like, um, in terms of our social emotional support. Okay, we can move on to the next slide. So for our tier of honor for all of our students, here are some things that we're doing in terms of their social emotional development. All of our students participate in Second Steps, which is a social emotional learning program that they do during advisory. And there's about one lesson per week. And during these lessons, they talk about mindset and goals. They kind of work through different bullying and harassment scenarios, thoughts, emotions, and decisions, and then relationships and social conflict. And there's kind of a lot of role-playing in these, um, different Second Steps lessons and kind of different scenarios that they have to work through, which I think is really helpful because it gets them thinking about, what would I do if this happened? Or what would I do if I had a conflict with a friend or something at home? And so it gets them thinking about these different scenarios and how they might best be able to handle it and talk to other students in the classes about it. Um, and Courtney and I do a lot of different activities and presentations in the classroom. This fall, we talked about Be The One, which is our mental health advocacy campaign for Mount Pleasant Middle School. And we really in that just encourage students to observe what's going on around them, nurturing those relationships with their peers, and then encouraging others. So that might mean walking a friend down to the counseling office or encouraging a friend to go talk to a teacher if they're struggling in class. But we kind of really encourage them to be the one to each other so that they kind of know what's going on around them and when someone might be having a hard time. We've also done some lessons on bullying. And then this month, um, Courtney and I are coming into the classrooms virtually to celebrate Mental Health Awareness Month. And some of the topics that we're covering are, we have them think about what their, um, positive character traits are. Um, we've talked about the impacts of bullying. We did an exercise on positive school culture and they wrote sticky notes to each other and then we put them all over the lacquer so that when they came in in the morning, they had just fun, positive messages. And it was really cool to read what some of the students wrote because it was anything from like, hey, you've got really cool shoes, to like, keep trying, you're doing great, we all have setbacks, but I know you can do it. But there were some really heartfelt messages and I think the students had a lot of fun with it. Um, this week, we're talking about suicide. Um, and they're gonna do a mental health fighter drill where they think about what they would do if they faced a mental health challenge or crisis, or if a friend of theirs did, and kind of who they would reach out to and who they would report that to and how they would get help. Because we want them to think about, if that happens, what should I do and how can I get help quickly? And then next week is our last lesson, um, and we're gonna talk about all, about self-care for this summer. And, um, we put together a video where this staff has, is holding up what they do for mental health self-care. Cause we want them to think about that we all have mental health too and this is how we take care of our mental health. So they'll be seeing that video next week. Um, and then some other things that all the students are getting, we have the Lionheart Assembly and then we have the Magic of Hope Assembly with Anthony Rupito. And he talked about suicide awareness. Um, and then of course, we have Ally. And Ally is definitely our, kind of our team MVP and our most, um, kind of our most popular counselor. But it's really cool to see Ally at work. I know, um, many occasions I've been working with a student and they might have a really hard time opening up to me. And I ask them, I'm like, oh, do you like dogs? And then we go get Ally and it just, like, all of a sudden, there's a connection there and they feel more at ease and Ally has been a great asset to our team. Um, and then if you come into the middle school, you'll see our student and parent resource libraries. There's one right when you walk into the school and it has a lot of different resources for all things middle school and all things mental health for parents, where they can learn more about anxiety and depression and what to do if they're worried that their child might be struggling with some of these feelings, self-esteem, um, we have a lot of books on mindfulness and gratitude. Um, and those are for students and parents to take and to use. And then we also have care kits that we've been handing out. We handed, um, each of our students got a care kit last year at the end of the year. Um, and then they are also in our current way that if students need, you know, just basic hygiene, um, anything, they're in these care kits. And they've been a nice tool for us too because sometimes at the middle school level, we do have those hygiene talks. Um, and so it's nice to be able to give them the tools that they need to kind of take care of them. So, and then one, another thing important that I've been trying to do this year a lot is just more education about mental health. Um, and so we've been doing a lot of bulletin boards, we did a growth mindset bulletin board. Um, and through Project Aware, we ordered some more resources for bulletin boards and showcases next year where they can learn more about anxiety and different coping skills. Um, so we're excited just for them to be seeing it or learning it so that they feel more comfortable talking about it. Go over to tier two. So tier two is that fifteen percent or some of our students are getting it. So the individual counseling, the group counseling, we've been really trying to be restorative as much as possible. So if there's a conflict between two students or a group of students, calling those students together, talking about it, making it clear as to how we go forward. Um, we've been doing different grade level presentations and we're very lucky to have our partnership with Dr. David Kenny from SCNU's new studies program this year. And they came to the school a number of times and they presented on cyberbullying, bullying, and harassment. And then they also did another presentation on anxiety and stress enhancement. Um, and he brings a group of college students with him and they have been, we have received nothing but great reviews from our teaching staff and from our students on those presentations. So they've been very helpful. Um, and then we have calling corners in most of our classrooms to help students regulate if they're having a hard time. Um, and for next year, Courtney and I have calling corner boxes that they'll be taking with them with, um, different kind of posters and things for those calling corners so that all teachers will be set up with a calling corner for next year. Um, one of our main partnerships was with the new Spectra group. And that is, um, they came to the middle school a couple of times after school to kind of provide support for LGBTQ plus, um, students and allies, and that was really helpful. And then the tier three inter, the tier three interventions with just a few students, that five just had the nutrition club, um, and there are, there's food in their locker every other Friday for them to take home for the weekends. And then we've been doing quite a few outside referrals and information and that's anywhere around community mental health, to behavioral health, to outside counseling resources within our community. And then we have some students who do work with 1016 Recovery Network. Um, and that's for students who might be using substances and so they have a whole program outlined through 1016 and they'll come visit the school and do that. We have a great partnership with Hopeful Ranch. So we have a number of students that go out to Hopeful Ranch every week to receive the deep mine, um, assisted therapy. And then we have our special education program, which is the Excel program and also our school social workers at the middle school. So just some additional resources, we have, um, Project Aware in the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe, um, Community Mental Health. And we have two, uh, two liaisons from CMH that will come over and meet with students. And we can refer out to 1016, like I mentioned, CMU new studies, Spectra. And then we're working on two partnerships with CMU Diversity Equity Inclusion and also possibly Isabella Stetson's firm house. So those are just two that we're kind of talking about right now. And then just the different trainings and certifications that Courtney and I have done have also offered to our teachers. Um, we've done the mental health first aid with a number of our staff. All of our staff did, um, QPR training last year. And then we've also been talking of the Michigan Cares Program, which offers social emotional lessons for our students. Um, Courtney is going through the Trails Program at U of M right now. And then we're also looking at this more training through Star Capital Model for the certified trauma and those that will get its practitioner. So just some things that are kind of in the loop right now. Okay, so looking at our data, we actually went back to the last, what I call, normal school year. Um, and that was the COVID year of nineteen and twenty. And, um, from the time schools started that year until shutdown on March thirteenth, there were, um, one hundred and seventy-six, uh, teacher referrals for counseling at the middle school. And looking at the same data for our current school year, from the start of the year until March eleventh, we have four hundred and fifty-one teacher referrals for counseling. So we have a hundred and fifty-six percent increase in, um, just from what our teachers are sending us. Now, these numbers are always entirely accurate because we do still have received many emails from teachers that just say, I, you know, the student is saying they need to see you right away. Or your phone rings in your office and it's like, the student is in crisis right now. And so, um, those are a little bit low, I would say. Um, so overall, we had, um, between Annalee and I, approximately two thousand and eighty student visits, the share between the two of us. Um, six hundred and seventeen of those have come through our teacher referral system, which we have, um, just made available for them. Now, all of the teachers have been right to their computer and as soon as a student says they need a counselor or a teacher during their team time or in conversation with a student have a concern about their mental health, they will submit a referral, um, those get emailed directly to us and then we try to respond with them, um, to them within twenty-four hours, which I could say we're probably about ninety-five and ninety percent of the time we're able to do that. Um, like I said, we also get lots of emails and calls, we get parent referrals. Um, we also have on our website a link to a referral for our students and our parents where they can make a referral after hours for students as long as it's not an emergency. If it is an emergency, we give them resources to access twenty-four hour support. Um, we get referrals via Book Guardian, which is software on our computers that monitors any type of, um, behavior regarding self harm. So if a student is logged into their student, um, account and they look up anything that is related to, um, suicide, self harm, um, or any type of content like that, we immediately get, um, a screenshot of that and an email and then we do follow-up. Um, all of our schools use OKSA, which is a program through, um, the state of Michigan, where again, they can anonymously submit, um, any type of, um, threat to anybody's safety and then those, um, get passed along to us. We also get handled care notifications from our local law enforcement if there are families that have been, um, connected to the case after hours so that we can check in on the students the next day at school. Um, and then we also receive referrals through our behavior process, which I know happened to our meeting about a month ago and shared that process with you. So when students are starting to, um, have increased behavioral issues, we're part of the intervention for that as well. Just a little chart on, um, layout of the students, how many from the teacher referrals that we're getting. Um, our sixth grade girls right now are in the lead. Um, and then our, uh, eighth grade boys are, are lowest. Uh, we do usually see that as the students are with us longer, their need for us tends to, um, drop and we always tend to see that our female students need more support than our male students. Over on the right-hand side are this kind of breakdown of topics that we deal with most. The largest section there, um, is just student requests because when the teachers submit a referral, oftentimes it will just say, student is asking, requesting to see you, so it won't necessarily give the content of what they're looking at. But I would say when we have those, um, the large majority of them are either peer issues or, um, issues with emotionality, so stress, anxiety, um, depression, things like that. Um, so then our next highest would be peer issues. Um, I believe that this has, um, increased quite a bit, uh, in the last couple of years. And I think we have conversations a lot about just, um, the time off from school that students had. Uh, you know, when we think about where all of our students are at in terms of, um, being at school and being with their peers and having to manage those relationships, I think, uh, we can pretty safely say everybody's a little behind. I know it took me some time to get back into it and I think for our students, that's kind of the piece two. Um, a lot of students who, you know, just feel stressed, um, and feel anxious, struggle with being around groups of people, um, in chaos, and like all of us. And they're also starting to manage, um, a greater sense of independence and workload coming to the middle school as compared to elementary school, so that's something we see a lot. Other things that are in there are just classroom issues, like we get referrals, um, because a student is disengaged, maybe, uh, teachers are concerned because they're not putting a lot of effort into their work or their, uh, slow to start their work, um, not feeling, they're not understanding maybe the work of their work will help with that. Family issues, lots of outside things that families are dealing with. Um, do, uh, talk to quite a few students about gender identity and kind of that natural questioning process that a lot of them are going through and some self harm stuff as well. And lastly, this is my own little kind of personal plug. It has nothing, well, it has a lot to do with what we do, but not specifically about our programming and our services. But just a reminder that, um, we're dealing with middle schoolers. And so I know that people are often very curious about our building and, you know, some of the things that are going on in our building, but we are dealing with middle schoolers. And so, um, one of the big things that we need to be considering is their brain development. So at this age, it's basically all coming from the amygdala, which is fight, flight, or freeze, and it's all in motion, right? And so when people say, oh, like they lost their mind, no, they just haven't fully developed their mind yet. So, um, they have not come into a full development of their, of their frontal cortex. And that's where all of their executive functioning comes from. So all that, uh, decision-making and processing that we all feel like, why aren't they doing that? It's because it's not quite developed yet and that's why we're here and that's to help them. Um, this age is highly self-conscious, they care about what other people think about them. Um, I put that note on there about invincible versus invisible and it's like they exist in one or the other. It's either they are big and bold and unafraid or they're afraid that nobody sees them. Um, they wanna be taken seriously, they're craving independence and in a way, we've given them a lot of that. Uh, obviously, um, at the elementary level, they are in a classroom with one teacher all day long and they walk down the hall and single file lines and they don't pass by a whole lot of other kids when they're on their way to specials. But in our school, every forty-five minutes, we ring a bell and we set seven hundred- and we saw seven hundred and seventy of them lose. And so they're going to do some silly stuff. And they're figuring it out. So we absolutely love this age group. We are proud of our school and we're proud of all of our students who come every day. We have so many that come every single day and do exactly what we've asked them to do. And they're just figuring it out. So I just thought that that was an important piece too. That none of this, that we're talking to kids about seems crazy to us. It's the right on track. You guys have any questions? I guess this is what I only does, most of the day with students.
One quick clarifying question. You had said that you do QPR versus QPR.
That's question, persuade, and respond is a protocol to go through with suicide. And so we, that was a process that we went through really two years ago. And then brought a new mental health first aid, which takes a very similar type of approach to it. There is actually a student side to that as well, that can, that students can be trained on. But our kids at the middle school are just a little bit young for it. And so we have not done the student training at our building. But I would say at this point, probably about eighty percent of our staff have gone through that training. So it's just about how to have that conversation if a student does bring up self-harm. Does anyone else have questions for Courtney and Annalise? Thank you all very much. Next, we're moving to our PSC presentation. And we're going to get started with our DK five art presentation. You're welcome, Lori and Jessica Van Hooft. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Speed. I am the DK through second grade art teacher at Hell's. And also DK kindergarten, second grade art teacher at Hell's.
And my name is Jessica Fauch. I teach DK two at Gander and then first grade at Hell's.
We're also here representing our three, five colleagues, Amber Gately and Kristi Kamenka. And we're here to present to you the curriculum updates that we've been working on over the last five years with DK through five art programming. And just a little taste of where we started. When I started in this district eleven years ago, there wasn't anything for curriculum. You showed up and you came over to the lesson plan and you taught it. And there wasn't really anything. And so the last time we went through PSC, we came up with our first pacing guide. Which we were very proud of at the time. Sort of a ladder of skills, starting with very bottom with DK and K. And then branching upward as to fifth grade. And then secondary has their own pacing guide. So the initial pacing guide was, hold on, I'm reading the slideshow a little bit here. Just to remind myself. It was based on some art concepts and practices, not just mediums and abilities. So we had, we have concepts that we're teaching kids. And but we also were including a lot of like material-based things. So like there was a section on ceramics. And we took that out, I'll explain in a minute why. We also worked on some updating our assessments. And we have better assessments tools now. And all of that is aligned with our report card standards that took effect a few years ago with our new district report card for that.
So if you want to go to the next slide, this is an example of what our previous PC guide was like. And as Lori stated, there were some concepts, but a lot of it was medium-based. And we ran into issues with, even though we have a very generous budget here, you can't always get the same mediums every single year. So how can you base your curriculum on something that you aren't guaranteed you have access to? And then the other issue we had is as we were creating, we're trying to create a tiered system of education for these students, we found that there was a lot of repeating. And while you do want to repeat concepts with students so they can master them, you don't want it to be a driving focus for two or three years in a row. So we really just had to reevaluate what we wanted students to practice. And we decided that what we really want them to learn about is, yes, certain tool use, but a lot of thought processes that are relevant to the age groups that we are teaching.
So like you have, you, the last slide showed our previous pacing guide. And this is our current pacing guide that we're proposing to tonight. It's got a different format, based on some of the other pacing guides that are rooted in our district. And another thing that we did was we decided for DK from K. So all kindergartners come in and we want to teach them those basic concepts. But then what about those kids that took DK? You know, those eighteen kids in your building that were lucky enough to get that DK program. We didn't want to double do it, so we kind of backed up a little bit. And we changed a lot of our DK pacing. We took out the double doing of you're running this in kindergarten, you're also running it in DK. And instead, we backed up and we focused more on what is art? Where do you find art? What can you notice in art? What can you talk about with art? It's all those basic concepts so that it's just kind of a preface for now. We're going to learn those materials and skills, those concepts that we had mentioned. We also linked our new assessments into this document. And we took out all of the material-based items. So it's not that we're not using those materials. We're using a lot of other materials in our classes on a daily basis. But what we did is we took out, because like Jessie mentioned, you know, she wouldn't be able to afford something this year where I wasn't able to. And so it wasn't something that we necessarily could keep up with guaranteeing that we are teaching this every single year at this time. So we took out those materials and we created some new assessments, which we're looking at now.
Yep, so the assessments previous to what we created were really based on performance. And while we tried to somehow incorporate, like, does the student know what a landscape is? You weren't always able to tell that they understood what a landscape was based on a picture they produced. And, you know, there's a huge variety of skills. And just because you can't draw a landscape does not mean you don't understand these concepts that we are teaching. So our assessments now are concept-based. We have our key vocabulary concepts that you can see in the pacing guide, which is something that we clarified, that we didn't have as much in our old one. And again, with the assessments, it doesn't matter if they can draw a landscape or not. It's set up in a way that, given these pictures, can you identify which one is the landscape? Can you identify where the horizon line is in this landscape? So it gives every student the opportunity to shine and really tell you that they have learned these skills that we are trying to teach them without having to produce a picture.
One of my favorite parts about our new assessments is that they're very objective versus subjective. So initially, they were very subjective. You, Jessie may think that her students are not using materials or, well, I forget their terminology, but maybe they're not, they're not using the materials correctly. But then I think that they are. And so it was a very subjective process. And now you feel very confident to be able to produce this data and say, this child knows this, and, or they don't, because it's a very objective process.
And as you can see with the assessments, they, depending on the grade, they obviously get more advanced. For our DK, our kindergartners, it's a lot of choice-based. Once you get into third, fourth, fifth, it's more of a response essay kind of format. And then what we have been doing is working with a program called Flickers. So even though our assessments, we use that program to give our assessments, our assessments are based on what we have created, if that makes sense. But the Flickers program, we have found, is wonderful. Because if you are looking for data, this collects your student data right away. And by looking at the screen, you can see that for, okay, this pre-test with this particular class, only forty-two percent of the students even knew what these were. And so with these assessments, we are now giving them every trimester with pre and post. So we can see how students are developing over the year. Whereas before, our assessment was at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year. And we didn't feel like it accurately reflected what our students were learning. And then the other thing.
Oh, and also that Flickers is a really great program that we've been using because we can use it as a formative, but also a summative assessment. So I can teach a skill this week and then next week, because we always see that a couple times a week, the kids can come in and I can ask them a question on the screen. And within seconds, I have their answer in front of me. So then I know whether I need to reteach this or not. So if I've got a few kids that are really getting it, we can do a quick reteach before we move on to the next concept. So it's really like, data in your hands right now, but it's awesome. And then the last part is that we just wanted to show you the report card scoring guide, which this is already in practice, this was put in practice a few years ago. But we just kind of wanted to bring this up because all of our curriculum is now in a line where it wasn't before. So we're following that pacing guide. The items from the pacing guide are being assessed. And then actively assess them, we're inputting that data into report card scoring. So now parents can look at it and say, okay, this is where my child maybe is getting a two or a three. And we can back that up with the data that we have. So all of our curriculum assessments, everything is all in a very beautiful, pretty room.
Yeah, whereas like Lori was saying before, even with report card scoring, it was kind of subjective. Like, did I, as a teacher, feel like this student was showing what they should be showing? Whereas again, like Lori might say, hey, yes, that he was. And I might be like, I don't know about that. So again, we just worked really hard to create a curriculum that has a foundation, that can be built upon, and that is clear across the board for every student, for every teacher, and for every parent that might have a question for honor.
Any questions on the updates we made for curriculum?
I just want to tell you, this was phenomenal. This is one of the best presentations, especially for your subject that I've seen you did. It was really clear. I was really impressed with it.
Thank you very much.
And I agree. It is refreshing to see how you align. So you're in a different kind of space than a mathematician, right? So you have to figure out different ways of doing MPA, your algorithm methodology, that links your creativity in giving space, but still gives the pieces they know so they can help be more creative and more persuasive. So thank you for all that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you guys for hearing us out.
Our next PSC presentation is the Social Studies Task Force for K five. Allison, thank you.
You know, my name is not on there. Although I do want to introduce them. We first of all want to thank you for the feedback that we received on the question lots from the last presentation. At our PSC meeting last week, we went through, we looked through all those questions. And we tried to go through and pick out what we believe is the information that will help to answer the question that you guys had as board members. And hopefully that community will feel, will answer their questions as well. So starting with our DK five, we do have Allison Carr and Kathleen Monk are here to present. They are both members on the task force, so they are not the chairs. So I will turn it over to them.
Okay, we're going to start with just looking at the next slide with a little bit more information about the Open Book Project to get a better understanding of it. Starting in two thousand fourteen, as part of the technology readiness infrastructure grant, the Michigan Open Book Project is designed to give kids a first exposure to the content that they will learn in their social studies courses. Funded by the Michigan Department of Education, Michigan Open Book Resources were created by teachers from around the state who had taught their content for many years. They are edited and maintained by professionals from the field of social studies in which the ISC, which include ISC consultants, University of Tennessee, and district curriculum leaders who all have extensive background knowledge and are into the true collaboration of the K-12 and higher education. Jen, can you open the link to the Michigan Open Book Project at the top of that first slide, actually? And just scroll down a little bit, you'll see the authors that, there's a plethora of authors. You can see them from male and female, which well-represented urban and rural districts with varying cultural backgrounds. You may recognize a new local basis as well on there. And feel free to read through their backgrounds as you wish. And at the top too, there's a little bit more information about Open Book as well. And our next slide has our K through five topics focused for each variable. And since I teach second grade, I show you a little bit about our community studies in second grade and focusing on specific chapter that I recently taught. You can go to slide one hundred thirty ten. So each chapter with, in this Open Book Project, has split into sections. So here you see there's what's history, how can we learn more about the past? What will people play and create in history? And what changes in the community over time? And there is some guiding questions. So those are the guiding questions, you go to the next slide, Jen. And one more. So a little information for teachers. And then this is section one, and there are some guiding questions for our choir. And at the beginning of the chapter, there's a topic thing for the students. And at the end of the chapter, there is one as well. So it just gives that time for the kids to dig a little bit deeper before they read. And then of course, after they learn about the topic. If you go to slide one hundred thirty-six for me, there is a neat piece. You see the little blue box in the corner. There is an interactive piece there for the students. And it just digs a little bit deeper into the topic that they're focusing on. And keeps them more engaged. So it gives them either some good visuals or some things that they can manipulate and test their knowledge of it. On the next slide, at one hundred thirty-seven, there is a little audio too, which is, I thought, was really engaging for the students. And my students and I really loved listening to that. It's the Aldrich family and it's talking about how we didn't have televisions. And they, families would sit on the radio and we listened. And that was very interesting to them as well. On slide one thirty-nine, you can see there, just gives the kids a job to kind of extend what they learned. And kind of, it also puts us, has it been directed with a community here? So it talks about work with your teacher to find out about history of your school. So it really links them personally. It also gets them to age within the community and maybe reaching out to community members to find out a little bit more about what school history might be for the present. On slide one forty-four, we're looking at how do we learn about the past? And it's talking about photographs, we can look at photographs. So this is a picture of Holland, which is eventually turned into a large city. You go to the next slide and you'll see the little town of Yale City. So many of the students, you know, they know Yale City is very close. I had one of my students say, oh, I have got a view of Yale City tonight. And so that's great, then we can see how it's changed over time. And they think that's really neat, to be able to relate that to their learning. And then immediately too, then they come back and report, you know, what did you see that in the center? Also, if you look at each, sorry, slide one fifty-two, it goes back to a little bit about Holland and about how there's two communities that meet there. And it's the Dutch and the Indonesian Bay community. And they talked about their needs of that community. And so if you go one more, actually, one fifty-seven is more, or we're meeting now. It just has a nice way of talking about how they settle in the same area, but they had a need for the land and they had different things. You can see the two sides presented, very balanced, what they needed. And it gives just a nice comparison for showing how they both were. So this is a little bit, just give you a little bit better idea and understanding of what a lesson would look like or a chapter would look like in the Michigan Open Book. And you can go to the next slide.
I want to show like the other research. I'll show you like the other resources, the resources that we did consider. Studies Weekly, the reason we were less inclined for that is that they are consumables. So we would have to repurchase them yearly or every other year, just depending on how we use them. Also, the digital access, it increases yearly and then also dropped off. So that was kind of difficult to keep using. Also, it's not updated regularly like open focus, which we're really interested in. Pedal Go is something that we're kind of using and looking into too, as more of a supplement. So K two right now does use it with grant funding, and there's still to look into doing that. There's now a three-five supplement that we are going to maybe look into using as a supplement, but that's not necessarily, we're not necessarily using it yet. So just as supplements to open book. So again, we don't want to use that on its own, it's not as kind of as open book itself. Also, National Geographic, again, that is that cost also with, it's a, it's a set curriculum, it's not going to be updated regularly like open book again, less diversity with the offers. And required, oh, so you're required to supplement even more to expand topics even with that too. So you're purchasing it and you're supplementing. So ultimately, Michigan Open Book was the most counterproductive, matching our standards and our needs. Students stay in the age, and it's not as much as supporting each unit. The project is created by educators for educators, which makes it really user friendly. It's constantly being updated, which I think every focus plan is really important to us, especially with social studies. So these are just more like updates also. So these documents that we've created in our curriculum are meant to be looking for things. So we want them to be updating and changing as we're learning and growing as people. Same thing with open book. So revisions to the basic guides and assessments can be made at any time during the five-year cycle, but it has to happen, all teachers have to agree at a high grade level to make those changes. Administeries need to create each building, or be aware of the changes, and then adopt it once or date as long as those two things happen. And then just, we mentioned it last time, I'm going and another teacher is going to the R E S D professional development on open book on May 31st. So hopefully we'll get a bunch of information on that too, and then think updates will be learned. And then lastly is that supplemental materials can be added into the possible resources column of your each grade level basic guide, like Pedal Go, for example. We don't have a ton about it for three-five, it could be something we add later. Any questions for the others?
Just a comment, thank you for explaining the open book thing more. That's a very different concept than what we're used to hearing in technical, so thank you for explaining.
Questions? Thank you for your time.
So now to move into our middle school social studies task force update.
Hello again. I just want to say a little plug, our social emotional team is awesome at middle school. So I hope you saw all the amazing things that they have done and worked on this year. So I do think we are offering great things for our students. So to switch to social studies then, I am here just to clarify a few questions and comments that were on the parking lot from the presentation that Rachel Oster did. And I met with the department today after school, and we just kind of went through a few areas to make sure that everyone was clear on what was presented. And the first part, first couple of slides are really just reinforcing that there's areas of study that happens kind of each grade level with social studies that are a little bit different than, you know, maybe some of the other subjects where we're working on multiple topics along the way or concepts. And you can see in sixth, seventh, eighth, and then leading into the high school, how there's a difference with what is actually studied or taught in each one of those grades. And then a couple of things that I thought of when Miss Oster was presenting last time was that transition from fifth to sixth grade and the transition from eighth to ninth, and what that looks like, especially when Sue was talking about the textbooks that would look like at the high school and the open book project from fifth grade, if that's what they're moving forward with. So thinking about the actual concepts or the studies looking different, we also want to reinforce that there's many skills that come from each grade level and move forward. For example, the mapping skills, timeline skills, learning about the government, economy, religions, cultural traits, all of those continue on from the grade levels throughout the different studies. And also what was mentioned, we're going to attend the professional development, the R E S D as well next week, and we'll be continuing to work through this transition of what it looks like from grade level to grade level, but then also with the new standards and skills and collaborating with other districts as well. The diversity emphasis, we felt like we spent a lot of time on our PISA guides and our work as a social studies department to really hit the diversity piece harder. And just wanted to emphasize again what that looks like in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. And that slide isn't new, it was presented before, but I wanted to bring that back. And same thing with the PISA guides, we wanted to make sure when we did update our PISA guides, we have that diversity column, and really worked on how we're curatively teaching certain standards, but then also how we want to add more along with that Nishinabi manual in there as well. And this slide isn't new either, but the Michigan State standard along with the Nishinabi standard. And the next slide shows a really great example of an eighth grade lesson that was actually just done. And on the left side, you can see the Nishinabi standard and the links that are in there. And both Mr. Serberg and Mr. Greaves did a really great lesson on the right about American Indian removal interactive assignment. And they went to this link to the Nishinabi manual provided and did a really great lesson, and the students really enjoyed that. So I thought it was nice to show that we already started using that manual, but then also how it is fitting into those PISA guides really well. And the other thing too that came up was the elementary is looking at that open book project, but we're also, but we're looking at resources that are different than the open book project at middle school. And again, we did review some Pearson textbooks, we reviewed the TCI History Alive. Again, those are things that we have currently. And again, older books and really not getting the same concepts, but also the diversity like we would like to see into some of the main textbooks and resources that we'd like to use. So again, with those resources, while analyzing the open book project, we noted that there was kind of not enough visuals, charts, and maps that we wanted to use. We teach our students social studies 45 minutes a day, and really trying to get them engaged and keep them on task and learning and wanting to be engaged in the reading materials is difficult. Plus also, you know, not all of our students are at reading level, and some of the social studies texts is difficult for our students. And so looking at some of those other resources, we weren't seeing as much of the visuals, but then also that diversity piece is clarified in there as well. And these are just examples, again, some that you've seen. So this is just an example of world history for the Nat Geo one, which I know that Miss Oster left those textbooks there for you guys to look at. I think you did look at some of those last time. And there's another text example, I think on the next slide. And there's also a link there for anybody who wants to look at the actual Nat Geo grade at a glance. And then the next couple of slides start to compare what that open book looks like next to this new resource. So this is just one sixth grade open book page sample that Mr. Hoyle pulled up for us today. And we just, we really wanted to emphasize as well that we think that the open book is a good supplemental resource and material for teachers to draw from. And, but we also see how it would be a difficult resource to only use, especially for the engagement piece for our students. We also have, we're working towards, we have resource room for our special education social studies classes now, but we're not sure we're going to have those in the future. So our social studies students, more of them will be in the general ed setting. So we really want to focus on the resources that they're able to read, ones that read to them, and that engage them as well. So this is just another example of open book on the left, Nat Geo on the right. There's a couple more coming up too, that we really liked, where students can click on the iPad, they have a section read, photo show them, multiple perspectives. And on the right is the open book as well. You go to the next slide too. And you can see, and it has some of the components. That reading tool is one piece that we really would like to see where it's being read to the students. And also vocabulary, this has like a nice little map, I don't know what it's called, I can't see the second word, map something, task, lab, map lab, that has a resource as well that just really goes along as attractive and engaging for the students. And just the final slides and all, the biggest part with that Nat Geo too is that Miss Oster said is we even had a consistent resource from sixth to eighth grade. So this would be something where we could be really consistent engagement and interactive instruction and lessons, has a relove component, especially for our students with accommodations. More technology incorporated, and then the cabinet assessments is also another piece that without that six to eight consistency, we've been lacking some of that as well. So that is all, just wanted to clarify any questions from our last time. Any additional questions for the middle school?
Will parents be able to access all this online? I mean, will they have access to any of this that if you choose to do the National Geographic? Can they go in and see what the lesson is?
That's a good question, if they would have like their own login?
Yeah, they'd be able to see what's actually being taught.
That's a good question. I don't know if they would have their own parent login, but always a student, just like you do now with Google Classroom, but they have the students login that they can go in and look at it. So we would offer that if anyone wanted to do anything ahead of time, our staff always does that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move into our middle school social studies task force update, what Sue had.
I didn't realize, I'll say this right up front, that everybody was doing such a big presentation. Mine's very short, sweet and simple. We only had a couple of questions back from the board, so I just want to clarify the answers to those questions. Okay, does PD training come with those textbooks? Yes. You can open the Google Book if you want, and he, they're free. I think, you have to scroll down the way it's all, I think it's at the very bottom. Can't you just scroll? Or does it show it there? Oh, yeah. Those are all, I think it's just up above, just are right there. Three days of PE included, and of course, they're available to us if we have any technical difficulties or any of that kind of stuff. So yes, there is professional development toward how to use the resources and the online capacity and all those kinds of things. And the same was true with the NAPM, the NAPs that we're getting. The other question that was put forth, and I didn't quite know how to answer the question, it was, could I, could we provide a sample of how we teach using an unbiased? And my first reaction was, it's in every lesson. You know, we take pride in our students not getting any idea of what any of the teachers in our department, what political, you know, where we, they like, we like to ask them actually. One day, you know, I'll present stuff that I can, like, you know, talk about like a Democrat. And then actually, it'll be a Republican, and kind of, you know, and they're like, we can't figure out what you believe. Well, that's the point, you can figure out what you believe. But anyway, lots of primary source documents. This is, and we kind of went with your US West slavery, which we generally don't teach a lot about. AP US history starts with the colonial period and goes to the end. So those are a lot of the primary source documents that Mr. Beckman uses in that AP US history class that has a colonial era there. I also use some of those documents as well as that Eyes on the Prize series, which is all actual footage. So there's no bias in, you know, showing the actual occurrence, right? And we use a lot of actual footage, primary documents. I'm not sure I'm answering your questions, but we do not infuse our opinion and we use primary documents. We use the textbook and the textbook resources because we're excited, assuming we get those textbooks that we're asking for. They have lots of additional inquiry and big question and diversity. They, I think it was in my, oh, in my last one. Try the next page. Those are just some more of the things that I use in sociology, which is not a required course. So those are my, those are things that I use in my sociology class. But there are lots of things, and I give my students often a big list of relevant documents, you know, movies that are based on true stories. You know, if they're interested and want to have some entertainment, try some sociology entertainment, you know, if there's historically relevant entertainment. I didn't get very much time, I didn't have these books. I slumped them with you guys and didn't get them back. So I just tried to put this together at 6:30, so I apologize that you aren't looking real great right there. I will, and I shared this with you guys, I believe, but I will fix this. I just didn't have it until just now, so I apologize. Also, I'll go back. And then these are some of the pages from the book that were in the original presentation that we didn't actually present to you. I think I was asked to show it out, you got the red one, the blue one last time. These pictures show you some of the pages in those textbooks. The inquiries, the, that is the American, and then that one is showing you some of the diversity that's included in these branded books. They are 2023 copyright, so they were aware of the movement within education. Really like this, what we liked, once this new version came, they're even more sold because the resources are six and seven years included in the cost. Very, very helpful with the creating of inquiry and the use of inquiry and all those kinds of things, as well as including diversity. And we also use the initial content that they, that document that they use. So that was all I threw together, because those were the two big questions I got from you guys. Was how do we do that? Well, we don't bring, we bring in facts, and we just talk about events. You know, if you, on those primary documents that Eric sent to me, he did have one that was a Democratic and a Republican from the, yeah, goes way back. In there somewhere, and all of those are links to the actual documents if you want them. But there was one, of course, you opened the one that's right. Sorry about that. But there's, yeah, there's one. But there's, yeah, there's one that that is, you gotta scroll to get there. But that is a Democratic from the, I don't remember what years, 16, 17, 1800, something like that. Oh, 1856. So that was their platform. And then I also, the Republican one is in there as well for the 1856 presidential election. So there's their party platform. So those kinds of things are other kinds of things we use when we're teaching. Any other questions?
I will make sure that you all have this presentation, so you get the links to it as long as you can take those out.
I think I tried to share it with most of you for a few minutes.
Thank you.
I wasn't here last week, so the whole presentation is not mine, so.
There's actually two, because there's the one that Sue gave and then inside that one, there's another one embedded in that one as well.
There are two, yeah, it's actually embedded, if you're looking for the other one, in Rachel's presentation. She embedded it and then it is all grown.
But also, the textbook is very helpful to review that, especially the high school one. It's a very interesting book, how they laid it out and how they did this to the dichotomies and gave one, at least two sides, if not more sides of the conversation in a very mutual. Again, it's, you run it 100 miles an hour, so you don't have time to dive into two, two, two different things, right? And so there, you're just going along, trying to do the high concepts. But I was very surprised how it, it's literally up to now, it's up to, through the Trump administration, into the Biden administration.
That's the beauty of the 2003 copyright. And for us, you know, we have had textbooks since 2007. So based on like George Bush's, George W.'s election is like the highest election that goes to. So we're excited to have more relevant, more up to date information.
And that's one of my questions, is, there's a lot of information. History keeps growing, so, you know, so pieces keep dropping off, so you keep bubbling up to higher levels. Is that hard to, to teach to in a curriculum? Do these resources provide you the ability to, to keep up? As everything grows, I mean, I had to learn far less about history than the students today do.
Right, we are, the state has not yet done this. My personal opinion is going to have, they're gonna have to have a third session, right? We, you know, we, if we're lucky and to a really almost too fast pace, we get up to the 1980s, which, you know, is fairly long, but now we need to be getting, you know, so we'll, at some point, I'm assuming, it probably won't be me, because I'm not gonna be part of the department much longer. But they'll be moving back to, to add trimesters, a third track, because they can't cover all the content and that amount of time. You know, 12 weeks, for a citizen, E K is only 12 weeks and then for the other two it's 24, but it's not a lot of time to get. And so, you know, luckily we are survey courses and we have our electives to fill in and supplement, you know, for our social studies junkies. The kids really enjoy that stuff. They have a multitude of elective courses that really help fill in and support some of that stuff. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Let's continue now, P S E, we have Katie Royal. Katie, is this the presentation I want?
Yes, thank you, that is. All right, well, this is our monthly update. And I do want to say that a lot of what I presented today is in response to questions that we have received recently. So I do appreciate the questions because it kind of guides the presentations that come back to you about the month. The first two slides are just, so the second and third slide are useful reminders. And we leave those in there just in case there are community members, parents for the first time. I think it's relevant that they hear how P S E works in terms of its place in the district and its place with you as the board. So I do apologize if this is repetitive, but we want to make sure that community members have access to this information. P S E task courses conduct curriculum review and research, provide reports to P S E and the board. P S E provides leadership and oversight to those P S E task courses and we provide reports and recommendations to the Board of Education. And the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education makes decisions based on reports and recommendations from P S E and P S E task courses. And historically, the collaboration of these partners have set Mount Pleasant Public Schools processes apart as a highly effective and valued curriculum review. So previous presentation, we had talked about parent involvement, what that might look like if there were parents interested in serving on a task force. And the curriculum task force interest form was created as a way for parents to sign up saying, I'm interested in serving in this area. One of the suggestions was that because these task forces are not in operation every single year, a parent might sign up, say, I'm going to be a part of the World Studies Task Force, the World Languages. And that one might not be activated for another two years. So the question was, how can we communicate that to parents in a way that they're not feeling like they've been ignored or not heard? So that they're aware of about when the tentative timeline for that would be. A consideration was made to, on that form that we see there, next to math, for example, to put the year that it would begin. The only issue that we came in is that, or that kind of came up with that, is that elementary and secondary start their cycles at a different time in the school year. An elementary task force, for example, will typically kick off at the beginning of the school year. So August to September is when they would receive their charge to begin their task force work. Whereas secondary would not begin until January of that same school year. And so we would have had to designate in some way next to each of those subject areas that elementary begins on this year, secondary begins on this year. And so in order to make it a little less confusing, I went ahead and put the link in there that takes them directly to the cycle review schedule. And this is updated right now through 2024. Obviously, this document will continue to change as we add on more years. But I felt like this might be a way for them to add a glance, be able to see approximately what they could expect with start of that task force to take place. The other benefit of doing it this way, I felt, is that it's one document to update instead of having to go through and do the trickle effect on that form every single year. So hopefully this will kind of at least give community members an idea of about why. Now, we say tentative because there are circumstances that do sometimes cause a certain subject area to go ahead on a timeline or in certain cases to push back on a timeline. But at least it isn't that guy. This document has also been added to the P S E page at our district website. So again, community members, parents can access that document directly from the websites. The next conversation here, please, is about the appointment of committee members. So as a physician listed in the master agreement, bargaining unit members, regardless of their immediate membership status, are eligible for P S E representative positions. Any bargaining unit member interested in serving should contact the association, which typically goes through the president. For more information about the position itself, the likely or unknown upcoming openings and the appointment process. So they would go through, when you have it, to get that information. I thought also it was important to note that teacher representatives serve a three-year term. At the conclusion of the three years, a representative is typically reappointed for an additional term if he or she is willing and also if they've demonstrated necessary commitment to the P S E process. And part of the reason that's an important piece, that reappointment, is because frequent overturn in these roles does make P S E far less effective. There's a lot of training that goes into what we do in this role, training in terms of what is the P S E process. I really had very little idea of what it was until I became a member of P S E. So you're learning that process as you are going through this. Another piece that comes with time is that we are leaders in curriculum, not just within our own grade level and our own grade level teams, but as liaisons serving and overseeing these task forces. We're in charge of being a leader to the teachers that have these task forces. We're also in charge of working with administrators who are serving as co-chairs in those positions. And so to have the confidence in the process and then understanding what this whole thing entails, in order to be an effective leader in that role, it does take time and experience to really get to that point. And so if we have frequent overturn every three years, those new members are starting over at square one and a lot of time is spent in reteaching as opposed to kicking off that year, our feet on the ground and just running the curriculum work. So the last piece that I have for you today came up because of conversations and questions about Common Core. And it's interesting because as educators, we throw around this lingo and we understand it and we know. We often take for granted that this language and what it means is not necessarily known outside of our walls and outside of our buildings. And if we're talking to parents, if we're talking to community members or even board members, understanding the nuances of these things is not always known. And so I wanted to take a little bit of time to kind of explain what Common Core is and how it compares to, say, textbook curriculum and even strategies that we use to teach. So Common Core standards are national standards that have been adopted by our state and many other states across the country. They specify what students are expected to learn in each grade level, no matter what school or district they attend. Now, prior to Common Core, we had what was considered the grade level content expectations, also known as GLIX. These were statewide standards. So to have statewide standards is nothing new for most of us in the education field. For years, we had been operating under these standards that are expected skills that we have to teach and the content we have to cover. It has changed names because rather than being state focused, it's now more of a national standard. The rationale for Common Core. Statewide standards were first graded, set baseline expectation of what students should learn, no matter where they attend school. We know that we have students who travel around the state. So they might start the year in one district, they're gonna end the year in another district. And so to ease that transition, having these common expectations allows that student to say, I should expect to get the same content covered here and here. There might be a little bit of difference in terms of pacing and what is taught, but the expectations should remain consistent. Well, this is also kind of the guiding factor behind national standards. Again, that trans scarcity that we have with students. We want to make sure that students traveling through any state can be expected to cover the same topics. But it's also to the same depth and to the same rigor. We want to make sure that students in certain states are not receiving a inferior education because of the standards that your state has. We want to make sure that students can expect to have that same level of rigor, no matter where they are going across our country. Something you may hear mentioned is called essential standards. Another term for this is called non-negotiables. Public school districts are required to teach the Common Core standards. Districts and schools can add to, but they cannot take away from those standards. Essential standards are identified as standards that require more time and focus to teach. This is often because they are either being introduced for the first time or because they are a major building block to what comes in the next year. These decisions, however, to determine what is considered the essential standard is not up for an individual teacher to decide. When we first started work on essential standards, these were district choices that were made. We set down this district grade level teams and we worked through what are what we consider to be our essential standards. It has evolved from there and we're now working at the R E S D level to clarify what our essential standards are so that students in Grancha Isabella, again, no matter what district they're going to, are going to have that same focus and the same emphasis on certain standards. Now, an important thing to clarify, just because something is not considered the essential standard does not give us the right amount to teach it. I don't get to say, well, that's not the essential standard, I'm just gonna cut that from the curriculum. What it means is that I'm going to teach that more to an introductory level. I'm gonna expose the students to it, we're gonna talk about it, they're gonna get that first look at it perhaps. But then I'm moving on. Whereas another subject or another area within that subject, I'm gonna focus a much longer timeline except working at teaching it towards mastery. So for example, I, again, see through the lens of third grade. But in third grade math, we do not have what's considered the essential standard for addition and subtraction. Because they have received addition and subtraction work in their, in first grade, in second grade. The algorithm itself is not changing. The only difference is that when we're adding and regrouping, we are now going to a higher place value each time. Most of our students can pick up on that pattern pretty quickly. What is a huge essential standard in third grade is multiplication and division. We have so many of our math standards that focus on multiplication and division. So we devote a large portion of our pacing guidance to multiplication and division work. The reason this is important to note is because when they go to fourth grade, they are expected to not only have their basic multiplication facts through 100 mastered and understand what those concepts mean. Because in fourth grade, they start right away at the beginning of the year, but they are working on extended multiplication. So two-digit by one-digit, two-digit by two-digit, two-digit by three-digit. They're also jumping right into long division. So if we don't dedicate the time that our students need to having that solid understanding of multiplication and division, they're behind already before they ever make it into fourth grade. So I wanted to kind of clarify that idea of essential standards. It doesn't mean that we get passes on what we teach. It just means we have to determine how to best allocate our time on our pacing guidance to make sure that the standards that we have the most of, we have the most amount of time dedicated to teaching those. As the two documents that I got linked there, one of them, it will take you to that top link jumper, is the G I R E S D. And what it does, it has links for math, you can click on each of those and it does take you to that grade levels essential standards for math. Again, these were worked on together in collaboration with teachers throughout our R E S D. I attended the math one several years ago. Really interesting conversations to see how our standards interacted above and below us. We would find out, oh, you guys really focus a lot of time on that. We don't need to spend as much time on that. Or we might find, hey, next year you're gonna hit that really hard. So this year we're gonna introduce it and let you do the bulk of that work next year. And if usually you find places where maybe there might even be some gaps, you would say, okay, well, now we've gotta go back and fill in because the expectation is that they were supposed to come to us with this and we want to get you ready for that. So really great conversations and that's been happening at the P L A level as well. And so again, on that, on that slideshow, the second one is just an example of the third grade math essentials document. And you can see just by looking at that, how much of our focus is related to multiplication and division. Another thing that kind of comes up is the idea of the textbook. And is the textbook our curriculum, is it our standards? A textbook series in and of itself is not our standards. It's a means in which to teach the standards. So when we select a text or a textbook series, our task forces do look to find one that aligns as closely as possible to our Michigan Common Core state standards. Of course, they have to consider to reading level, ease of use, available remediation, enrichment, online resources. But they're definitely looking to see which one does align the most with our standards. But it is not the standards. A textbook series may introduce strategies for how to complete a specific skill or task. This strategy, again, is not the standard, is a tool for how to get to a specific outcome. And the two examples that I have for you, I feel like are probably some of the ones that come up the most just from what I've heard from families, from community members. Common Core math and how it's so different than the way we learned growing up. So one of these examples is something called the bar model. Bar models are a tool for solving story problems. As a math person, I do love the fact that bar models create a nice visual for students because just by looking at that bar and what parts are filled in on it, a student can very quickly learn. Well, if I have the two parts at the top, but I'm missing that number that goes across the whole bottom, well, I have to add to get that. If I have the whole thing and only one of the parts, well, then I have to subtract to find out that other missing piece. It is a great visual, but it's not the standard. The standard says, use addition and subtraction within 100 to solve the one- and two-step word problems. So when we think of Common Core, that is the Common Core standard, is solving story problems. This bar model idea is a strategy that has been introduced through our Math and Focus series as a way to get to that answer. Can we use traditional algorithms to do it? Absolutely. Do we still teach students how to identify keywords? Yes, they only care for keywords and that they can often be used in two different settings. So if you have the word more, more can be now. Sarah has 12 pencils, Tim has 14 more. How many pencils do they have or how many does Tim have? Well, you have to add the 14 to the 12 Sarah already has. But if you have a question that says, how much? But if you have a question that says, "How much more does Sarah have than Tim?" Well, now you're talking a subtraction problem. So that language of keywords, as teachers, we struggle sometimes because you want to teach kids that technique, that tip, that little hint that's going to help them. Until they see it in the other scenario and then they're confused. So bar models were looked at as a way to say, can we give them a visual that no matter what the words in the story problem are, they're going to be able to look at that model and say, "Two parts, but no whole. I got to add." "One part in the whole. I have to subtract." Another example are number bonds. Number bonds are a tool for teaching mental computation. Number bonds teach students they can break apart numbers into their place values so they can be more easily added and subtracted mentally. Ideally, we would love for our students to become mental math students. Because if they can successfully get a sum or a difference in their mind without having to take the time to write it down, math is going to become so much more easier for them and they're going to find greater success with it. This is where we're just teaching that child something that many people do without thinking about it. If I'm going to add 10 plus 9, for example, or I'm not saying 10 plus 9, let's do 12 plus 5. Maybe I'm going to add the 5 plus 2 first, and I'm going to get 7. Then I'm going to add the 7 plus the 10, get 17. I tend to do this most often when I'm multiplying. So if I'm going to multiply 65 times 3, if I don't know that fact right off the top of my head, I'm going to multiply 60 times 3, which is 180. Then I'm going to take 5 times 6, which is 30, and I get 210. It's something that certain people just naturally have that ability to do. They don't think about it. It's just how they break apart those numbers. Well, we would love for all students to recognize that they have the ability to break numbers apart. And number bonds is a way for them to see that. We teach a lot of adding to make 10. Or we teach using how to get to 10 as a starting point because in the base 10 system which we use, 10 is a huge number. So again, this is not the standard. The standard is to fluently add and subtract within 20 using mental strategies. It doesn't have to be number bonds. The number bonds just happens to be one of the strategies taught within our Math and Focus series. As much as I can get my math geek on with these, we do recognize that there are students who struggle to use number bonds. They struggle to use bar models. This is based off of the Singapore math. Which if our students have that embedded as a way of thinking, as a way of learning from a very young age, I think we would find a lot more success with this within our district and within our classrooms. The problem is that we tend to teach this as an add-on because it's not what comes natural and it's not what we've always done. So the other thing that kind of comes with this, if they go to the next slide, is with selecting textbook series. While we do not have an option regarding the teaching of Common Core, we do have an option as to which textbook series we use to teach these standards. The effectiveness of a particular series can be determined by looking at our district data. Changes to the series could be considered as part of the task force process during year one of the cycle review. Any changes, of course, to a textbook series are dependent upon availability of funds. So for example, we are getting ready to start looking at our Math and Focus series. We are looking at how effective is it? Does our data support this? Is there something else out there that is better? To teach those standards, but maybe to use different strategies. Maybe to do it in a different modality in a way that will have a greater effect for students, more positive impact. And then of course, that last line again is just for the process questions about PSC. We reach out to Linda. So I just wanted to take some time to hopefully kind of explain the difference between what the standards are versus the textbook series or strategies we might use within that series as a way to teach those standards that we've had for years in Paris. What questions do you want to have? Anything to have questions that come up at a later time, please just let us know. Again, your questions have driven these presentations so far for this last part of the school year. And so it can be something that continues to drive our presentations moving forward into the next school year.
Yes, I would like some clarification on one. And by the way, you do an excellent job presenting. It's wonderful. When a staff member, a teacher shows some interest in being on PSC and they go to, at this point, when? What if there's more than one? Is there an application process like there is for administrators?
That's a good question. And being that I tend to be not so much on the end of the appointing or on the end of even the bar being the language that goes into PSC, I can maybe defer that question to Linda and say, "Has there been a situation where we have had more than one interested teacher?"
Honestly, not in my recent years that I know of. I think it's an email that goes out of interest for all members. And it's a pretty big job. So there's not lots of people applying. And you can tell they take a lot of responsibility at the end of these tasks. I think ideally, if someone does apply, then I think it says on the contract that Wendy and I would work in conjunction with each other to reveal skill sets. And it does spell out different grade level needs on the administrative team. And I'm trying to think if it sounds like we kind of have a middle rep, a high school rep.
And then to elementary because our community side of that.
Right.
And I can ask for more information on that and let you know my thoughts?
I do think that the P, or I'm sorry, that MPEA executive board also has a role in that. So if there are multiple candidates, I think they consider the candidates and then work with the assistant superintendent.
I know a lot of times our candidates who do come up to PSC have had quite a bit of work on task courses. So they at least have an idea of what's like to serve in that role. They're not necessarily going to understand all of the rules that go into it necessarily, but they've had exposure through serving on a task course prior.
Thank you, Kate. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. No other questions?
Can you talk a little bit about what is next for the board as far as the social studies recommendations?
Well, Linda and I will be meeting to discuss that because I know, did she want to take this one up?
She wanted to. I think at our next, at our next meeting, we will be more specific on that we recommend the purchase of this textbook for this cost and give you a grant total and let you know what the funding source is. We'll take that final page of silver bronze, gold-silver bronze, and we'll make our recommendation to the board next June 6th.
And then ultimately, the board would approve that request?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the superintendent's report, yes, we are still on the superintendent's report. Linda, we have our spring update for the OLA policies.
Everyone's favorite, the OLA reports. As you know, we work with a OLA representative who helps us ensure our policies to ensure we are up to date with recommendations that protect our district and to ensure we are in alignment with Michigan and federal law. This is the first reading of these policies and if you need any further information about any of them, please let me know and I'd be happy to research further. So policy 1616, 3216, and 4216 are very similar. Staff dressing grooming. 1616 is a new policy for staff dressing grooming for administrators that did not exist before. But this policy does match the other employee groups. 3216 is a revised policy that did already exist for teachers related to staff dressing grooming. And 4216 is another revised policy for support staff. All of these policies add the sentence after letter E, and that is new recommended wording. The board recognizes the employee's right to dress in accordance with their gender identity with the constraints of the preceding dress and grooming guidelines. Policy 5511, student dressing grooming, this is another revised policy, changing some wording to gender neutral and adding the sentence in regard to gender. Also adding a sentence that directs staff to enforce the dress code in a nondiscriminatory manner without regard to gender. Policy 6110, grant funds, this is a revised policy for the use of federal grant funds. The main new addition here is the requirement of maintenance of effort and maintenance of equity requirements and that we have to provide appropriate documentation of such. Policy 6114, spending of federal funds. This is a revised policy that adds the wording on page 2, letter B, conform to any limitations, so exclusion set for the cost principles. $200 or in the terms and conditions for the federal award, including prohibitions regarding court costs incurred for telecommunications and video surveillance service or equipment. And letter D, under selected items of cost, all federally funded contracts in excess of $2,000 related to construction, alterations, repairs, painting, decoration must comply with Davis Bacon prevailing wage requirements. And policy 6325, procurement of federal grants and funds. That again repeats the sentence about all federally funded contracts in excess of $2,000 related to construction. You have to meet those prevailing wage requirements.
Since this is the first reading of policies, if any board members have questions about any policies, if you could send them to Linda so we could research prior to the next board meeting, that would be great. We can consult our OLA representative there. Another item for discussion this evening in your board packet. You do have a recommendation letter as well as a resolution from Trune. Our district was approached by the Maury Foundation and Shepherd Public Schools to ask if we would transfer the property of the Maury School over to the Shepherd School District. And you have a rather detailed packet in your, or documents this evening. They are asking to transfer over the 40-acre parcel where Maury Charter School, Maury Flex Tech, is housed right now. Shepherd Schools would like to use that for a possible early childhood learning center. And you can see through the documentation because it's currently owned by a nonprofit. Although it's in our school district, we do not receive any tax income on that property. So it's just a parcel, it's just that section of the parcel that would be transferred to Shepherd so that they would then be able to use that. So I don't know if you all have questions about that or if you had an opportunity to review that or would like to have an opportunity to review it and then look at acting on it in the future.
So this is not a request from Flex Tech?
No, it's not from Flex Tech High School. It is from the Maury Foundation that owns the building, that leases part of the building to Flex Tech High School. That will then lease the other part of the building. So that building used to be a K-12 building. Flex Tech is in the high school side of it. Shepherd would like to use the elementary side of it. So they would then be able to house their programs in it. Shepherd can't house Shepherd programs in a building that is in the Mount Pleasant Public Schools. So it's not a request from Flex Tech at all. It's from the Maury Foundation and from Shepherd Schools. And so as you can see, that like the letter that's prepared from Trune, I had them do the research. We had to do a conflict of interest letter because Trune does represent Mount Pleasant Public Schools as well as Shepherd Public Schools. So you can see that they've laid out that there really is no risk or no reward for either district. It's just a matter of transferring it. In talking with Eric Spindler prior to being approached by Shepherd Schools, their intention was to tear down the elementary side of that building. Because it sat vacant for so long, they didn't feel like they had anybody that would be able to be in that building. So you can see if you scroll to page five of the document, just that small cutout, again, it's about a 40-acre parcel. So the land all around it, north of Blanchard Road, would still be in the Mount Pleasant Public School District. It would just be that 40-acre parcel that's in red that would go to Shepherd Schools. So and if you've ever looked at the land survey, you know that those lines out there are zigzagged and you know, I always thought it would be nice if it was just a square, but it's not. So that's the request. As of now, no formal action has happened. What would have to happen is if our board approved this request, the Shepherd Public School Board would have to approve the acceptance of that land. And then it would have to go to the Board of Gresham Isabella RESD and then they would have the final approval. So there is a draft of a resolution there where you can see where we transfer the property to Shepherd Public Schools. The second resolution is for Shepherd to accept their transfer. And then I believe there's a, or maybe those are the only two. There is a resolution then that the RSD would authorize the transfer after that.
Want me to ask a hard question?
Yeah, I'll try.
So we don't have the ability to transfer partial rights, so for example, transfer to Shepherd the ability to have this property for the use of a preschool. So in other words, so Shepherd couldn't come in and build a high school, build an elementary building there?
Well.
And this is probably for taxation purposes, correct?
Right, right. So this is not land that we own. We're just essentially adjusting, they're asking us to adjust the lines of the district. So ultimately, if the Maury Foundation wanted to sell that property to Shepherd Public Schools and we transfer the land, they can do whatever they.
Well, they still can transfer.
Right, right.
But Shepherd couldn't have a school there. Shepherd could use it for other purposes, but they couldn't have this property.
It's confusing because we don't own the land. It's just a part of our district.
That's how I understand it.
Yeah, right. So you're correct.
Honestly, the only time it would be is if they actually turned the land into something that was not a nonprofit and put a, you know, business on there or something. And then at that point, we would be losing any tax, like taxes, but currently, there's no taxes being.
Right, because it's owned by the Maury Foundation, which is a nonprofit, right? So they have shared that that's not their intent, but certainly plans.
Well, we don't have, I was going to say, we have no control over that.
I'd say thank you for giving this information on complex kind of was your.
Yeah, they did do a really good job.
Didn't they do a nice job?
Good job.
Yeah, talk about other.
Because it was confusing. I was thinking, we owned it and by the time I got to the end of it, I understand what's going on now.
And I will just add in that Shepherd, I mean, obviously, we have a wonderful working relationship with the Shepherd Public Schools. But even though we initiated this process with Trune, Shepherd has paid all the legal fees for this. And they've been very, very supportive of this process. So we could certainly give you all two weeks to decide if you wanted to approve this resolution or we could have it. It is not currently listed under new business this evening, just because I wanted to make sure we had the opportunity to have a public conversation about it prior to asking for a vote.
I'd like to suggest to wait until June.
June 6th, okay. I will go ahead and plan on adding it under new business for the June 6th meeting. So if there are questions between now and then, especially given the nature of the request and that I'll probably have to go to Trune to give the answer, you could, I mean, I don't have the time. That would be great. Thank you. And then the next thing, just the last thing under my report. I just wanted to have a discussion about future board meeting locations. I personally really like the setup here in the cafeteria. But I know we talked to several board members about wanting to try to move back to Kinni School. I didn't know if this summer would be a good time to try to move back to the boardroom. Or if board members felt like we should stay here or what we wanted to do. So I just wanted to throw it out there for conversation.
I personally like it here. I agree. It gives more people an opportunity to feel comfortable being here as opposed to being basically sitting elbow to elbow.
I think the public feels more comfortable instead of going in, going to the second floor. I mean, one thing would be great is the visual is kind of confusing for the public. Because I think when there's a PowerPoint behind us that we're not paying attention to, we'll realize that we're seeing it on the computers. But beyond that, I think it's, well.
Next offer, very important to see. So next is the requested financial reports.
Yeah, we'll welcome that. Welcome. Yeah, we'll welcome Heather. Welcome. Our business office here tonight, Kim Chinning for Ginger's. Thank you for being here, Heather.
All right, so for this month of April.
Can you use the mic, please? Awesome.
All right, so for this month of April, I have a bunch of reports. Our general fund revenues is sixty-one percent compared to last year, which is sixty percent. Same amount of revenue received as last year. And this year's budget is just higher due to additional extra grants. And the expenditure is sixty-eight percent versus last year it was sixty-eight percent. So it's actually equal.
The board has it in their book.
And on to special services funds. We have our self-sustaining sports or athletics. Our revenue is sixty percent this year compared to zero percent last year. This is due to the self-sustaining sport in addition of dance, which will be added to our upcoming budget revision. Expenditure is fifty-one percent this year compared to twenty percent last year. A lot of things are going to be repeating, so our updating our budget or updating our budget revision. So it's going to be coming soon. Our children's learning center revenue is one hundred and fifty-one percent this year compared to last year of eighty-seven percent. This year is higher due to a federal grant we received in January. And this too will be added to our upcoming budget revision. Expenditure for this year is for April is eighty percent compared to sixty-eight percent last year. Our SINA revenue is zero this year compared to zero last year. And our expenditure is one percent this year compared to zero percent last year. And as always, we're spending down that fund balance. As for food service, revenue is ninety-eight percent this year versus sixty-four percent last year. And expenditure is a hundred percent this year compared to fifty-one percent last year. As we know, things are increasing in price. So hence, that's why our expenditure is a little more right now. And again, we're going to do the budget revision and it's going to be reevaluated and put into our budget for this year. School store this year for revenue is sixty-one percent versus last year it was twenty-eight percent. Expenditure is forty-three percent for this month of April and last year it was thirty-three percent. As for the treasury report or the treasury report for general fund, beginning balance of March 31st, 2022 of ten million. We had receipts for the last month of April of five point one million and a dispersal of eight million dollars. That brings us to a balance of seven million dollars for the month of April. As for the debt retirement fund, on March 31st, 2022, we had a balance of two point six million dollars, receipts of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars and a dispersal of two point five million dollars. The balance on the 30th of 2022 is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And last but not least, we are talking about our capital project fund. We had a beginning balance of, as of March 31st, twenty-six point one million dollars. We took in fifty-six hundred dollars in receipts and dispersals of sixty-six thousand dollars. Leaving the balance of twenty-six million dollars for the month of April.
Okay, next is correspondence. At this point, we did not receive any correspondence last month to the board. Next is the citizens' request to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda items. I do have... As usual, I will call you to come up to the microphone. In doing so, you will have your three minutes. Mr. Arby will let you know when your three minutes are up. With that, we'll start with Jessica Lapp.
Jessica Lapp, beginning township by the son of the high school. Thanks to the Mount Pleasant Schools for merely finishing, or merely bidding to finish the course, finishing strong after another difficult year. My son, graduating senior, has many good memories of students, teachers, and extracurricular activities that he takes with him as he moves on to new adventures in higher education. I encourage the board and the leadership of the board and all the administrators and teachers in buildings across the Mount Pleasant Public School system to continue to strive toward the stated goal to provide an inclusive, safe environment free from harassment, discrimination, bigotry, or intolerance to all students. This week's events show us again that hate and bigotry are alive and well in the U.S. and can lead to horrible violence against individuals in a whole community. Let our schools be a counterpart to that racial hate so that we live up to our pledge that we make every time we meet of justice for all.
Thank you. Next is Laura Gorley.
Hello, my name is Laura Gorley at the Mount Pleasant. In June of 2021, Deb Holland, U.S. Secretary of the Interior and a member of the Wauwunaputno tribe, issued a memorandum directing the Department of the Interior Agencies to coordinate an investigation into the federal Indian boarding school system. On April 1st, 2022, Assistant Secretary of Indian Affairs Brian Newland, a member of the Bay Mills Band of the Ojibwe Tribe, submitted a one-hundred-and-six-page report showing for the first time that between 1819 and 1969, the United States operated or supported four hundred and eight boarding schools across thirty-seven states or territories. The report confirms that the United States directly targeted American Indian, Olaspen Native and Native Wani children in the pursuit of a policy of cultural assimilation that coincided with Indian territorial dispossession. It's a reminder of how education can be employed by government to subjugate people perceived as in the way. One passage in particular that stands out that is reproduced from the 1969 Senate Report reads, "Beginning with President Washington, the stated policy of the federal government was to replace the Indians' culture with our own. This was considered advisable as the cheapest and safest way of subduing the Indians, of providing a safe habitat for the country's white inhabitants, and of helping wipe apart our desirable land, and of changing the Indians' economy so that he would be content with less. Education was a weapon by which these goals were to be accomplished. The federal Indian boarding school initiative sheds a new light on how the federal Indian boarding school system produced intergenerational trauma by disrupting family ties in Indian communities. The Mount Pleasant Indian Industrial Boarding School was established by an act of the United States Congress in 1891. The school was in operation until June 6th in 1934, enrolling approximately three hundred students each year. The San Jacinto Law Tribal Community obtained eight point five acres of the original three hundred acres in 2008. And since that time has organized and honoring, healing, and remembering that every June 6th to commemorate the shunning of that school. This year's keynote speaker will be Secretary of the Interior Deb Holland, coming into us virtually. So as a trauma-informed school system, I hope to see all who can at this event as we honor, heal, and remember this part of our local history that affects Mount Pleasant Public Schools, our students, and the families we work with, even to this day. And I have a flyer for the honor and hailing of a memory ceremony in case you need it.
Next is Heather Chalmers-Gerzle.
Hi, I'm Heather Chalmers-Gerzle of the Mount Pleasant. Thank you to the board for your service. I really appreciate the time you give to our community. As I was listening tonight, I applied the pledge to work to create a more diverse curriculum in terms of honest history, honest being the keyword. However, we need to not look just at subject, but authorship. I would just start tonight, the authors must be truly representative of a diverse community and not all of the same culture. And not just a few people of the other culture. That seems to be merely tokenism. Okay, we need to create a diverse of authorship with diverse perspectives, diverse ideas. We need to include more texts by authors representing various cultural backgrounds. If we are in fact going to create a curriculum that represents diversity and inclusion, please, Mount Pleasant Board, ask more questions. As you're listening to these presentations, ask more questions. Ask more questions. How are we going to truly help our students understand diversity to create an empathetic response? Truly create empathy. Representation is vital. It's vital. Please ask more questions. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, starting off with the approval of the minutes from the May 2nd, 2022 regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Next is the approval of the bills into the sum of one million, six hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred, forty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
And then next, we are moving on to the class of 22 graduation resolution. In your board packets this evening, you have a graduation resolution where we are granting and approving the graduation of the members of the class of 2022. Do you want to read the resolution?
The Board of Education, Mount Pleasant Public School, graduation for the class of 2022 resolution. Whereas, Mount Pleasant Public Schools Community Education Way will recognize the graduation of members of the class of 2022 on Thursday, May 26th, 2022. Whereas, Mount Pleasant High School will recognize the graduating members of the class of 2022 on Sunday, June 5th, 2022. Whereas, the prospect list of graduates of the class of 2022 attached to this resolution has not the graduation requirements as set forth by the State of Michigan. Therefore, be it resolved that the prospective list of graduates for May-June 2022 as certified by the Mount Pleasant Public Schools is approved. So this is a roll call, or I guess if we first made me take a moment?
I know that we accepted the recognition resolution to accept these graduates for graduation.
Second. And then this will be a roll call. Courtney Stager, yes? Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Dana Cockburn?
Yes.
Tim Motaker?
Yes.
Amy Baugh?
Yes.
This is wonderful. Congratulations to our graduating seniors in both the Community Education Way program as well as the high school.
And also the public knows, we actually have all their names. So many of them that have old lists and irises, that's why we graduate.
Yes. And then next, we go to the BON project approval.
So we're asking this evening that you approve the BON bid hack number one, see high school site improvements without the tracker servicing bid as recommended by the Volgas Corporation.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Next is the Gresham Isabella RASD budget resolution approval. And that is another one, I believe. You do have a resolution in your packet. So we're asking that you approve the budget as presented by Kevin Kolb this evening because it is a resolution when you need another roll call. Do I need to read this as...
You're starting.
A regular meeting of Mount Pleasant of, or Board of, sorry. A regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools was held at the Mount Pleasant High School Cafeteria on May 16th at 6:30. The members were present. The following preamble and resolution were offered by the members, and we're going to decide that. Whereas, the board received the RASD general fund operating budget on or before May 1st, 2022. And whereas, in accordance with Section 380.624 of the Revised School Code, this board must now adopt a resolution expressing its support or disapproval of the proposed RASD budget and must admit the RASD board. Any specific objection and proposed changes to the board may have the budget prior to June 1st, 2022. Therefore, be it resolved that the RASD general fund operating budget for the 22-23 school year be supported or disproved for the reasons attached here. And then the Secretary of the Board is hereby directed to submit a copy of the resolution to the Secretary of the RASD.
I know that we accept the resolution of the budget for 2022-23 for the RASD.
Second. Roll call. Courtney Stager, yes? Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Dana Cockburn?
Yes.
Tim Motaker?
Yes.
Amy Baugh?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Next is the custodial bid.
And again, in your packet this evening, you have a recommendation from Josh Rhodes, our Director of Maintenance, that we accept the bid proposal from Romanoff Building Services for a contract beginning July 1, 2022, running through June 30th of 2025.
Is there a motion? So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes. And next is the administration contract journals.
At this time of year, this memorandum in your packet will serve to notify you that the master agreement with the Mount Pleasant Administrator Association states that each individual's contract will be issued for a two-year period. A contract will automatically renew for a year unless the administrator has notified sixty days prior to the termination of the contract of the intent to renew. The administration recommends that contracts of the following administrators to be extended through June 2022. Kim Bishop, Stephanie House, Joe Judge, Erin King, Kelly Marycu, Jeff Platy, Josh Rhodes, Katie Ranky, Mercy Stowe, Mary Kay Oaks, Matt Waltershead, Darby Lever, and John Winkler. And of course, we didn't put Mrs. Falcetta and Mr. Conway on this list because they are retiring with us at the end of June.
Is there a motion to accept the administration contractor note?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes. Next is the central office contractor notes. So we do have three district administrators that are part of our central office staff and not a part of these administrators association. They are on a three-year contract renewal. So again, this would be extending their contract terms through June 30th of 2025. And that would be for Alina Boyd, Assistant Superintendent, Ginger Faber, Chief Financial Officer, and Kimberly Funnel, state and federal programs coordinator. So we're asking that you approve their contract extension through June 30th of 2025.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes. Next, we are coming up to the teacher tenure candidates.
Yes, the memo in your packet notifies you that the following teachers have successfully completed their tenure, their probationary period. And since they have successfully completed this probationary time, they are now being recommended for tenure status. Kayla Awing, John Burnett, Kim Chapman, Brad Budiman, Amanda Hutchins, Julie Jackson, Lori Lilly, Josh Stutzman, Amanda Lowry, Alex Wagner, Amber Yeagley, and Angela Zander.
Is there a motion to accept the teacher tenure candidates?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes as well. Passes new here.
And we are excited to welcome Sydney Apple back to the Oiler family. Sydney's joining us as a speech and language pathologist, and she will start next year.
Wonderful. Is there a motion to accept the...
Is there a motion to accept the hiring of Sydney Apple?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome to the next round, unanimously passes. Next is the M P T A ratification of tentative agreement. In your board back this evening, you have a tentative agreement between the Mount Pleasant Transportation Association and our bargaining team. This agreement adjusts the wage schedule for our drivers and our maintenance employees. And meanwhile, we are heavily recruiting them, working on making our positions more attractive to them. So in the, in the letter of agreement, we are upping, we're increasing our cash and lose slightly, we're offering them the opportunity to earn merit days throughout the year. Maintenance employees are getting one additional personal day. And then the wage schedule is adjusted so that our starting wage is a little bit higher. It's moving up to sixteen seventy-three for the start of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Again, our bargaining for, with this group really focused on the ability to recruit, train, and retain employees in this group because we know it's a critical area for us. So we're asking that you approve this tentative agreement effective July one of twenty-twenty-two that will allow Josh to start hiring new drivers as soon as possible, hopefully. Is there a motion to accept the tentative agreement?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes. Next is the new activity account.
So the new activity account request is considered, is called Mother Nature's Minions slash Environmental Club. I talked to Liz Bush earlier today, just in regards to what it really is and what it means, and she just mentioned that it's just students are more involved in wanting to be part of the nature or wanting to do some planting of seeds. I know that that's been discussed with Josh multiple times too, so that's just what the new account is.
Mr. Blydus, I talked about it a little bit in our rotary meeting today, these thinking that this group ultimately, once they get more organized, they'd like to do a community garden where they would plant herbs and vegetables and things like that, and then be able to share them with the community. It's been a little bit tricky because they're not here in the summer, but that's kind of the goal, that ultimately they would have something like that. Is there a motion to accept the new activity account?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. It moves us next to the Board of Education discussion. This is an opportunity for any board member to discuss issues or concerns that they may have. Does anyone have anything they'd like to talk about tonight?
I just wanted to touch base on the activities and things we have over the summer happening for students.
Yeah, for summer, summer programming. We're actually are really excited, I'll start Linda, and then you fill in if I miss anything, but for our elementary students, we have partnered with Peak to offer summer school programming for our students that are in that tier-three level where they really need that remediation. So we are helping to support families financially by paying for Peak and having them go to the program, and then there'll be a full-out academic part for those students in the morning, and then they'll still be able to take advantage of all of the Peak programming. In addition to that, every elementary student K-five has a book pack that they're taking home with them again this summer. If you remember, we did that last summer where they're having, they're all able to take high-interest, great-level books home with them just to kind of keep reading in the forefront of their minds. And then all of our elementary buildings this year are doing the mobile book program. We started that three summers ago, maybe now, with Gators on the Go, and we sort of have evolved that into, you know, Vikings on the Voyage, and Thirsons on the Prowl. Everyone's got their own little twist on it, but basically every elementary student will have the opportunity to be a part of a mobile book program should they choose to do so. Those programs are offered for our students going into sixth grade even, so those that are finishing fifth grade. By shift to the high school, at the secondary level, most of our summer programming is focused on credit recovery because that is what those students need often, or that's what they need the most. So the program is a little bit different this summer where they're offering it more days, but for a shorter period of time. So where before it was really always every Tuesday and Thursday in July, this year it starts at the end of June, maybe the middle of June. It's three days a week, and it's for a shorter time segment. So it's largely a computer-based program where the students are focusing on the credit that they've already lost, but then they have the opportunity to work one-on-one with teachers in those content areas on skill building and that kind of thing. Last year, I think they had around sixty students in the program. And so they'll do that again and again, more days, but shorter periods of time. So from the end of June until the end of July. At the beginning of August, they are offering a program here just for eighth-grade students coming into ninth grade. So same idea where they're going to focus on academic skill building, but then they're also focused on, let's learn the building, let's figure out where your locker is, let's make sure that you feel really comfortable with this transition. And I believe they're planning to invite around fifty students to that program so that they can have more students here in transition. So our buildings will be very busy this summer, with the exception, Fancher and Rosebush will be fairly well shut down because they're getting new ropes this summer, and there really isn't much happening at the middle school. But otherwise, Canyon will host the before and after summer programs at Peak, so they'll have two weeks in June and two or three weeks in August. Valvilles, Holland, and Maguire will host the Peak programs, so they'll have this six-week camp that will include, again, the Peak camp and our summer school programs. And then this building, between summer school and athletics, will be busy pretty much all summer. So although things will wind down in one way, they just sort of shift and corrupt it the other way, so. Did I miss anything?
No, I was just going to say, we worked really hard to recruit staff from Peak, so we did lots of email postings and things like that. We held a Zoom so that we could talk to our peer professionals about the opportunity for summer work. We even tried to make the news out to our seniors because once they're eighteen, they're eligible for that type of summer work, and it's a great experience with kids. Rumor has it that Peak is going to go on even more summer adventures than ever before, and that was part of our excitement about this idea is that we want the students that we send to the summer program to have an enriching environment, not just figuring out how to do their multiplication facts. So we're really excited that we will be able to, you know, take them out and about and experience a little bit of Michigan this summer.
Another great connection for those students, if we're recommending the summer school piece of that program, we will offer transportation so that keeps our drivers driving, which we know they want to keep working. They will also be driving for the field trips, and I believe Peak has additional grant funding, which is why they're able to do more field trips this summer. So it should be a good, we want to keep folks busy. Yeah? Yeah. Yeah, trying to.
And our, yeah, our certified staff will push in just in the morning for that academic piece, so we think it'll be, you know, a less stressful summer for them to just be able to kind of swoop in, do some academics at Peak, and then enjoy their summer as well.
Will there be meals again this summer? Yes. It is a little bit different, and I'm linking on the locations, but it would be at any, any Peak building, right? So it would be Valvilles, Holland, and Maguire. And when I say that it's different, if you remember, prior to the pandemic, we, folks had come in and eat on-site. We have to go back to that this, this summer, so we can't distribute meals like we have been, but our cafeterias will be open at Valvilles, Holland, and Maguire for breakfast and for lunch for any student up to the age of eighteen, free of charge. They do not have to reside in our community, they do not have to attend our district, and then any student that receives special education services up to the age of twenty-six. So, and we have some nice communication ready to go out to families as it gets closer to the end of the year with them. So the, the other thing I'll just say is that I believe Linda and I made some good progress today, and so I do believe that we will have a calendar for next year that we will be able to share with families prior to the end of this year. So they'll be able to take that home to know when things start next year. Making progress.
I would also like to propose that we, as a group, put together a team of people to do exit interviews with our staff that are either retiring or moving on for whatever reason. I think we can give some insight on what we are doing well and maybe some of the thoughts that they have. I know that Linda, you do them now, but it might behoove us to have more than one person
Is there anything else? Have any other questions?
I'd like to thank the presentations of the PSE groups today. I learned a lot of information, and I really, really appreciate them responding to our questions, the information is, to help us better understand that conference process. And congratulations, graduates.
Yes.
Very impressive.
Absolutely. Is there anything else? Don't I call this meeting adjourned?